This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council comes to a quarter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Parker Raphael.
Here.
Here.
I'm here.
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 President.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Maybe my chin will be up above the table for the evening.
Any additions, deletions, changes? Mr. Panau.
I'd like to add an executive session for personnel discussion ahead of agenda setting, after all the new business.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Executive session before the agenda setting.
It's meeting seconded. Nothing else, we move on, did approval of minutes, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Changes, deletions, additions to, questions? Motion to approve of the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Meeting seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried. Commission committee authority reports expired terms. In your packet you will find the requested report from Mr. Ray on the high school inspection issues. And you should have written reports from everybody except the fire department, as far as department heads. Lonnie, I think, we're gonna do a written or an oral report on this. Okay. Lonnie will have the, Lonnie will be on deck for the oral report for the finance committee. When you're ready.
Right ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, we've been working on getting, of course, the fiscal year closed and the January and February financial statements, all the adjusting journal, journal entries and everything recorded, and should have those in your box here very, very shortly, just in the next day or two. So, at any rate, we're moving along and working, meeting with some of you and working on different projects that the finance department has some input on, not necessarily the recording and accounting part of it, but that we have been requested to sit in on and give some financial advice, such as the Carroll County ambulance district contract with the city, western district contract, and that sort of thing. So, when we get on down, I'll have some other things to share with you as we get on into the agenda. So, any questions?
Thank you, Lonnie. Want to have everybody here from planning, from CUPC, hospital, be notified that Mr. Mitchell, David Mitchell, has resigned. We do have another gentleman on deck will not submit his resume today. Parks stays the same. HTC Melissa Green resigned. So we'd be looking for another person for that. Cemetery, no changes. Ms. Malach, you're up for Yalabag.
We might as well go ahead and put this on the agenda for our next meeting so we can talk about it and come to some kind of a conclusion. Whether to do away with them, whether to keep them, just exactly what we want to do about them.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Meeting seconded, put this on the agenda for discussion next time. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And we will have a dear committee report, when is our next one? A committee meeting?
We're waiting for a statement.
Yeah, we're still waiting for those guys. They're gonna take their sweet time about it 'cause they have a lot to consider due to the fact that they're trying to find a regional area for the deer hunt committee orientation meeting, which they never get in a hurry about anything. Any changes, we'll notify. Nobody, no public comments. All right, next we'll move on to unfinished business. Number one on your unfinished business is the nonconforming offerings assigned been postponed until coded. Number two is discussion of the hospital audit lease. You should have a, a person before you within, at the next meeting to give you an update on all everything that's going on with Mr. Bordelain and Mr. Ortega, Ortego. And by that time you will get to look at the next resume or application for nomination on the new gentleman, I won't mention his name right now due to the fact that it's not time. Number three is auditorium commission ordinance review, it was postponed until April by the And you wanted to put in some input on the workshop?
Yes, we have feedback from Mr. Berry, Mr. Parker. And Miss Balance, that's an animal drawn, it looks as if it's going to be probably April 22nd, Sunday, in the afternoon. Those are the, the two dates with the most positive responses, so I'm hoping to hear from Mr. Panau.
That was for animal drawing?
No, this is for the odd workshop.
Okay.
We're scheduling for two workshops. Two o'clock in the afternoon is the scheduled time. Parker, yes, Butch, yes. Lady, if all goes well.
Yeah.
What was the date?
It's looking like the 22nd or the 29th are the most likely.
The 22nd, it's from what I heard, it's the best.
March?
April.
April, sorry.
April 22nd, Sunday. So that's a yes for Mr. DeVito. Would that be true for the 29th also?
Um, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We can be best on the 22nd. When I talked to Rags, he's gonna be out of town the week before and the week after, so that was his only time he could be there, looked like everybody else from the odd committee could be.
Okay, he had sent possibly not for the 22nd.
Right, and I talked to him today.
Okay, so that's all right.
It's positive, yes.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Number four is set date on workshop for animal drawing vehicle requirements. Was that thrown in? Is this to be discussed?
Let's see, the feedback on that so far, it's looking like the 20th of March, April 3rd or April 17th, all Tuesdays, evening at 6:30. It's looking okay for Mr. Berry, Ms. Raphael, Miss Balance. Anyone else?
Yeah, I could do the 20th.
20th is good for May.
These are all Tuesday evenings at 6:30.
We're gonna make it the 20th.
I am, do you think you might, or do you want to let me know tomorrow, Mr. DeVito?
No, I said yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Okay. Nothing else, we move on, number five.
When is it again, please?
Uh, March 20th, Tuesday, 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No further, number five, discussion or update on emissions pollution plan, motion to discuss?
Move to discuss.
Second.
Okay, I think Jerry is here. Come on in, Jerry.
Evening.
Hi, I'm Jerry Landrum, 19 Kimberling. First I wanted to thank Mike Bishop from the Chamber of Commerce and Mayor Pay for co-sponsoring a seminar that we had on, on February the 1st on the economics of commercial scale solar water heating. The economics are really good on that. However, there's a problem with the financing of these things, so on that greenhouse gas reductions plan that you'll be talking about tonight, it's very important that property assessed clean energy legislation at the state level, and those other state level policy changes for the renewable energy portfolio standard, and the, the, those other two there. And I want to volunteer my services, I'll be glad to work with anybody, your, your, your city employees, whatever, on trying to fine tune this greenhouse gas reduction plan, I think this is really gonna be a great thing for us in the future, so I'd be glad to work with anybody on that, and appreciate it very much.
Y'all having questions for Jerry, hold on a second.
What, what are your feelings about converting from gasoline to natural gas powered vehicles as far as emissions plans and such? The reason I ask is because President Obama is talking about a, a program for municipalities, businesses to convert their fleets to natural gas. I do know it burns cleaner than gasoline.
Yeah, it's, it's very clean, and with all the fracking that they're, they're doing now, it's, it's much more abundant, and it is here. However, I suspect that what's behind a lot of that fracking, and also the construction of these liquefied natural gas terminals, is I'm afraid that they're, they're cashing in our, our resource, the natural gas, probably gonna sell it abroad, so. As far as converting, you're talking about our trolley fleet?
No, our public works, police, vehicles like that.
Well, the, one of the projects on this was a biodiesel refinery using a waste vegetable oil. That might be a better option, I, I think we'd have to go into them a little bit deeper to, to, to see. I, I couldn't off the top give you, give you a solid answer on that, I think we should look into it.
Well, there's nothing concrete coming out of the federal government, but I'd like to think that, you know, if it did, that we might look into something like that.
Mm-hmm. Sounds like a real good idea to me. And on, some of the first steps that I would recommend that, that you take as a council or to maybe go ahead and either adopt this greenhouse gas reduction plan as written, or to figure out what changes you want made into it, and then go ahead and get the process started of, of requesting those policy changes from the state. Be probably the most important thing to get, get going. And, and look at all these things, like the conversion to natural gas and the biodiesel, and, you know, work all these down a little bit further and find solutions that make sense for us.
Anybody else? Left hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, number seven is ordinance to regulate limos, update 31812 workshop.
No, you skipped six.
Skipped six.
Six, also, I'm sorry. Discussion of license fee for apartment buildings, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Berry.
I missed the meeting, obviously, last, the last meeting when this was brought up, and in reviewing the minutes, I noticed that there was an item about, Miss Balance was talking about, did not favor a schedule that would be higher for those with fewer rental properties. I'm not sure what exactly how that was worded, but the reason we came, I came up with what, and it was just strictly for discussion, was because of what Mr. Panau said about having the more units that you have, the less cost it is. I think one of the things that council needs to come to a determination is whether or not they consider apartments as a business. I mean, you're making money off of it, and that's the logic being that therefore it's a business. Now, if the council feels like, and I understand we do have a problem with low income housing here, the units that, what I had proposed was a minor cost in there, and of course, I'm sure the, the owners would probably go ahead and pass that on, they, or they ever would just take it off their own money, even though it wouldn't be that much. And if the council is interested in this, and I think that's where we, where I'm looking at, is whether or not we need to proceed, go ahead and proceed with this or not, or if we just want to let it drop and, and just consider apartments as a non-business. But we do have some apartments out on Pivil Rock Road, that's quite a few units out there. And again, it seems kind of ironic that sometimes we're, we are talking about things, different units on there, and this is another way of regulating what apartments we have, it's another resource, and it's another checkpoint that we have. And that's what, one of the reasons I bring this up, so. It's up to the council, obviously, on what they want to do with this.
If you consider apartments a business, why wouldn't you consider just house rentals a business?
Well, house rental is a business, but it's a single unit, as opposed to apartments.
Do we have a fee for that?
As opposed to apartments. And actually, I guess you could consider, it's harder to regulate houses as rentals, as opposed to apartments. Apartments are pretty obvious. You know, I don't think we need to get too nitpicky, I mean, what we're looking at is, you know, units that have, you know, you know, like five units in an apartment, in a house. That's obviously an apartment, and it's gonna take time for the building inspector to go in and inspect those units to make sure they're life safety code. With a house, you don't have that responsibility. But apartments you do. Actually, anything over two units is multifamily.
Would we really be gaining that much in revenue to do this?
I don't know how many units are in Carroll House Apartments, but I know there's over, there's quite a few, and to help supplement the building inspector's cost to review those.
Ms. Balance. On the face of this, I'm probably not in favor of doing this at all, but if it was decided that we were going to do this, I would be, I would tend to be more in favor of it if it was an across-the-board, maybe a basic rate for apartment complex itself, and then the per-unit rate should, would be the same across the board, whether you have five apartments or 50 apartments. The same rate for each apart, for each unit, regardless of whether you have 10 or whether you have 50, say $25 apiece across the board, just throwing that number out there, not that that's what it should be. But, again, I'm not really in favor of this, but if we were to consider it, I would like to see it the, the same across the board, so that people with, so that people with more properties, people with more are not being charged less. That, I don't think that's equitable. I think people with less should be charged less, people with more should be charged more, but I would settle in the middle of everyone being charged the same per. So that's what I have to say about that, thank you.
Any?
Well, one of the reasons for bringing this to the table was the nonconforming, assisting planning commission and being able to identify, and if we don't have any way of regulating, it wasn't, it wasn't an effort to necessarily generate revenue, it was an effort to regulate and assist the planning commission on continual update and identification of nonconforming, I don't remember exactly what the phrase is, whether it's nonconforming apartments, houses, that are being used for apartments. And the other thing, there was no intent, and this hasn't been, been brought up, I don't know how many county or state subsidized housing complexes we have in town, but I think those, if, if we do consider any type of regulation, licensing, that those would be exempt from, from any fee. I think the biggest thing is being able to help identify nonconforming for safety issues and continual update of the listing that planning's gonna be doing.
Anybody else? No further discussion?
Well, Ms. Mayor, I guess we need to see a consensus on where we want to go with this. Do we want to drop it, or do we want to continue with this? Do we need to develop it further? And Mr. Panau noted this was a, basically brought up from the planning commission. If we want to drop it, then we might as well drop it and not, we don't need to discuss it anymore, or we want to continue looking into it, which is need a consensus, I think, from the council.
Make a motion, we drop it.
Second.
Second. Meeting seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No.
James, excuse me, Mr. DeVito, were you a no?
No.
You were a no.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Three, three.
I'm not gonna vote on this one. Number seven, ordinance to regulate limos, the update from the 3812 workshop. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open.
Should we set another date for that?
Yeah, well, we were planning to meet a couple weeks from the last meeting, and, you know, a few items came out regarding the limousines and how they're operating, and the apparent conflict as to limousines operating as taxis. It's obvious that there is some overlap that's going to have to be addressed by council, otherwise, you know, we're not gonna have, have a taxi franchise in town much longer. My perception is we have too many limousine services for a small town, as opposed to not enough taxi service, so I think there is going to have to be something done by council to ensure that we can keep a franchise, a taxi franchise operating, 'cause in my opinion, there is, there is some practices by some of the limousine services that in effect, they operate as a taxi service, so there's, in my opinion, there is an issue there that should be dealt with.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Weaver, what do you recommend the next step be?
Well, my understanding that, that they intend to have another workshop here in another week and a half, see what the outcome of that is.
On the 22nd.
Okay. Any further input on this? There's no need for a vote on anything, so we go to workshop. No further, we move to number eight, update on the city attorney finance issue, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And I talked this over with Lonnie, and we come to the understanding that Mr. Weaver's current financial issue falls within the parameters of the IRS guidelines and is, is legal as a contract. Mr. Clark will know, if there's any further issues regarding this, 'cause he is the financial If you have any questions for him. Anybody?
Can you give us a basis of what made you reach that decision?
Okay, definitely.
Typically, when the IRS looks at contract labor versus an employee, in Mr. Weaver's case, he has a private business that he operates out of an office, that's essentially related to the same type of work he does for the city. He charges on an hourly basis and sets his own hours. He occasionally comes to these meetings, but this is not his general order or type of business in being here. Now, versus an employee like myself that has set hours, work here, and like for where you all are concerned, you're paid a specific salary or pay schedule, and your work is essentially here at specified hours. And he does a lot of the work from his office, drafting ordinances, most of all his work. This is not his principal place of business, and so that comes within the guidelines of, of the Internal Revenue Service when they look at contract labor versus an employee. I'd like to see this one line in, in this section change, it says all others. Says, Chief Police, Fire, Marshal, Building Inspector, City Player shall initiate direct communications with the city attorney, all other city personnel and city officials and appointees shall submit written requests to the mayor and receive his or her written approval before initiating communications with the city attorney. I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, I think we jumped ship on that one. We were talking about the finance, that's, I think that's procedural. Is there something in there I missed? Because we were talking about, first it's the finances, then addressing him for council. I think it was discussed at last council, meaning that you could.
Okay.
It was recommended to be changed, just like you just mentioned.
Okay.
I have a question regarding a statement that was made about that he does work with the city in his office, and as an elected official, I, I have a real, real hard time putting my, my hands around the fact that the city code states what his pay will be, and yet having it in the budget as a personal services contract, there's, there's nothing that says that the city attorney position, and I think that's how it ought to be looked at, at this table, not necessarily the individual, because you could have somebody that is running for city attorney that, that might just be a retired lawyer that's keeping his license up and is doing work for the city, and if we don't get this straightened out as far as where it's at in the budget, or where it is in the code as far as how the payment is made, I don't see what him having a private practice and doing, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that based on that, he has told you that he does that in his office. Is that correct? I, I don't see where that plays into the, to the saying that it's I don't see where that plays into the, to the saying that it's a personal services contract with the city. If that's the case, then we might as well delete the city attorney position and, and just contract the labor, because that's the way it appears in the budget.
Well, all I'm addressing is what the criteria is for a, under the Internal Revenue Service Code for a contract labor versus an employee.
So, so we're considered contract labor too?
No, sir.
We run for election just like he does.
And you have, I think in the code, there is a set amount that you're paid.
There's a set amount in the code that he's paid too.
But he's paid on a, I think yours is a flat rate and his is an hourly rate or something to that effect, for the most part. Mr. Ball?
I think you're, I think we're getting confused with two separate issues. We can contract with another attorney if we do not want to have our present city attorney sitting at the table. Councils, three or four councils back elected to have our city attorney representatives at the table because of the cost. It's a separate cost to have him sitting at our table each time he comes in for a hundred and, I forgot what it is, a hundred and fifty, a hundred?
A hundred and fifty per meeting.
Per meeting, whether it's a thirty-minute meeting or a five-hour meeting. We can have that as a contract, and we can subcontract that out to anybody that we want to as a council, if I'm not mistaken.
At this time, you'd have to change the code, which would require that you wait until the next term takes place, I believe. You could have an additional attorney.
Okay. But his basic, code-wise, represents a city as far as municipal law. Now, I hadn't researched, and I'm obviously not the lawyer, so I hadn't gone into this.
But actually, the city attorney by the code that you operate under now is here either at the bequest of the city council or the mayor. If both wanted the city attorney not at this table, then the city attorney would not be at the table.
Ms. Ball?
Did you say that it would have to wait until the next term? Why could, if we so choose, chose, why could we not change the code now and have it be effective for the next term? I mean, why would we have to wait till the next term?
You would have to wait for it to be effective.
To be effective. We could actually do it now and it would become effective then. Okay.
Anybody else?
And since this is a city of the first class, city attorney is still elected. You'd have to deal with that, but you could change the duties or the pay structure.
Or both.
Or both. You're doing it like most small cities do right now. Most small cities do not have a full-time attorney. Most large cities have a full-time attorney that are under salary and have a budget and will operate basically as a department of the city. Rogers has a primary city attorney who is elected, they're a city of first class. He has, I think, two or three deputy city attorneys that work under him, and he has a staff of four or five that the city pays for. And they provide him with an office, and he's actually in part of the city hall. But a lot of the other small towns, cities that have less work, like hopefully Eureka Stays with less work, typically have a part-time city attorney, this is often elected, particularly, if you go across the river, you're dealing with Green Forest is a second-class city. They don't necessarily have to elect them. They're typically elected in smaller cities, a first-class, they are. Second-class appoints some of theirs. But they typically operate on a partial amount of their time. And most of them have a private practice. Some are, like Mr. Pennell said, and are older attorneys or attorneys that have some other means of support and don't practice in private, but most of them do. And they usually typically divide their practice so that they're practicing primarily somewhere else other than the city where they practice. At least if they do the criminal prosecution, they don't normally do the criminal defense in the same jurisdiction. And I don't do criminal cases within Carroll County, which is the nineteenth, nineteenth East Judicial District. Because I prosecute for the city and take the appeals to the circuit court.
Anybody else? No? Ms. Ball?
This item of business is called update on code, chapter 2.32, city attorney. So actually, Mr. Raphael's comments were entirely appropriate, and this would be a good time to update the portion of the code that he addressed. So we might as well go ahead and, and move forward on, on at least that right now, because we know, we know, I believe we have a consensus that we do want to change that portion of So that needs to be written, and what we need to know now is who shall rewrite it and who shall direct the rewriting. I think that's what we need to maybe talk about, at least for a moment.
Mr. Weaver, who do you recommend do the rewrite on it, since it's about your position?
Well.
Anybody else believe, if they will?
I don't think they will. The honest truth is, I wrote that language that you're looking at, at the bequest of the city council. And if you tell me what you want, I can rewrite it, but if you don't want me to, we can get someone else to. But I suggest you don't just completely open it up where every city employee has direct contact, unless you do want to drive up the cost of having the city attorney. But as far as if you want to put the officials in there, if you want to put some more department leeway or more commissions, that's fine. Just tell me what you want and I'll do it, or tell me you don't want me to do it, and I will find you another lawyer that does municipal law and make you a couple of suggestions at your next meeting if that's what you want. And one of them can draft it for you.
Ms. Ball?
My thought at this moment would be, here we have the mayor, the chief of police, the city fire marshal, city building inspector, and city planner shall have the right to initiate direct communication with the city attorney. All other city personnel and city officials and appointees shall submit written requests to the mayor and receive. Okay. So it would be as simple, perhaps, as up here where it says the mayor, chief of police, blah, 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 include that. Okay, so it would say, for instance, the mayor, chief of police, city fire marshal, city building inspector, city planner, and elected city officials shall have the right to initiate direct communication with the city attorney. Then over here where it, where it says all other city personnel and city officials, blah, 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 shall submit written requests. It could be as easy as that, just putting here in this line, maybe right after, the mayor, elected city officials, the chief of police. What are your thoughts on that, gentlemen?
Mr. Pennell? I don't see us getting a city planner in the future, so while we're updating it, we might as well take that out. But I go along with what Ms. Ball said as far as the clarification of city officials. I like the elected city officials portion.
That would, that would narrow it down to us.
Sounds pretty simple. If you're going to clarify it, I would like to make one more suggestion to you. Court personnel typically have to communicate with me about court cases. I get calls from the judge, I get calls from the court clerk. If you're going to adjust the language, that's always pretty much been a given, that that's part of their duties, that they have to communicate. But if you're going to change the list, you might as well include them. I do have other contact with other city employees at times, but usually that's where I have to call them in regard to if I have a police report that I'm prosecuting, I may have to call a police officer and ask the police officer, what did you mean in this? So that I know what we're going to face in court. Or I may have to call one of the firemen at one time or another to ask them something about one of their reports if we're dealing with it in court. But that is not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is more, you should probably include that the courts can have contact.
Are you talking about both or just the circuit clerk?
It would be that our district court clerk actually is the one that primarily would be contacting. And occasionally, I hear from the district court judge when she has something that needs to be amended as far as the scheduling of the courts or changing of something.
Better than us. Better than her.
I mean, it's, it's always been pretty much a given that the mayor allowed that contact, but.
And I don't see anything in here, at, at first glance, that restricts you from contacting the people that you need to contact.
It doesn't.
Yes, this is.
The way it's written, it should not. It's not meant to.
Right. Okay, then, I would move to ask the city attorney to, to rewrite this in the manner that we, as, as we have directed.
Okay. Before you, would you please read the last sentence? It's lengthy, but it starts with this.
This shall not prevent?
Yes, ma'am. Read it all the way to the end, just so everybody can hear it.
This shall not prevent ongoing communication between any city personnel, city officials or appointees, and the city attorney over approved manners, matters, nor shall it prevent any employee from initiating contact with the city attorney if he or she witnesses another employee being or personally has been subjected to any type of discrimination in the workplace.
Okay. Do you want to leave that one in there? That still gives anyone who witnesses that, which should go to the department head, actually, or to the, to the mayor's office.
Actually, that was a language that was put in there at the time by suggestion of the municipal league as a cutout in case that the individual that was being accused was a department head or was an elected official.
Okay.
And it was as an alternative. Doesn't give an alternative if it's the city attorney harassing the people, but.
Okay. Since, since the city officials or, or appointees, does that cover what we're just talking about? City officials, it doesn't say elected city officials.
That's what I would like to see say, elected.
Yeah.
The ones that are allowed.
It makes sense, the way you're talking about.
Come up to Warren Summers.
Well, if, if municipal league recommended that one, I should probably leave it unaddressed. But yeah, I think back up here.
I haven't heard.
Like Mr. Pennell said, drop city planner and put in elected officials and court, district court personnel. Of course, the judge can contact him anyway, he's an elected official, and he prosecutes in her court, so she can do what she wants to.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I would make that a motion. Could, could the city clerk possibly read that back to us so we can clearly understand?
Ms. Ball's motion to ask the city attorney to rewrite in the manner directed.
Do we need to clarify that, or are you clear?
I think it needs to be written out, and it needs to be more clarified, yeah.
Shall I start over?
Yes, ma'am.
I would move that in chapter 2.32, section 2.32.04, duties, section D, be modified to say, the mayor, the elected city officials. And who else did you ask, please?
District court.
District court personnel.
District court personnel. If you could simply, in that sentence, insert elected city officials and district court personnel, and modify it in that way. That would be my motion.
And delete city planner.
Does that include law enforcement personnel?
For which?
The chief of police.
It allows the chief to contact me if there's a concern. As far as prosecuting the cases, I'm the one initiating their contact with them at the direction usually of the, of the court or a matter where we need. I mean, I call them and tell them, we need you in court to testify, or I call them and I tell them, your report here, I need to know what you meant by this, or I need you to bring this video or make a copy of this for discovery purposes or whatever. So that's more initiated through my needs of them, not their needs of me. But they could have a question. Do they go, they would go to the chief for that? When typically they need a warrant or a summons, they typically fax that under the chief's authority to me. The chief gives them authorization to fax that or send that to me.
Okay.
Because he, he has to sign off on most of that before it can be sent to me anyway, personally. He typically signs the request.
Any further on it?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment to section D under section 2.32, city attorney? Do we need a roll call on this? I think just a voice call would suffice.
Voice call for now, and then if, when they get ready to approve for the actual ordinance, the last, I guess they now require them to be, the roll call at the last.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carried.
Anything further on this?
I'm sorry.
Anything further on this?
Is there any further discussion on this?
We've already voted.
Yeah, we've already, I figured there's enough discussion.
That ends discussion.
Everybody's had their chance, yeah.
There may be other things other people want to address on it, though. Is, is Mr. Pennell satisfied with the direction he was taking?
I move that we go on to the next order of business. We know I have to bring this back up to the next council meeting when we bring this up as an ordinance.
Point of order.
State your point of order, sir.
The, the vote was strictly for the city attorney to take an action. I don't think the discussion of the updating of the chapter was concluded with the vote.
Okay. But when I ask for discussion, everybody sits there. I'm not going to sit there for a long time and just wait. So it's either move on or talk. Talk or move on. So that's why I give you all opportunities to do so. So since it's already voted on, the amendment to the section D, if there's anything else pertaining to this chapter, then the floor's still open for discussion, is my understanding. Is there any further discussion on this chapter, 2.32, city attorney? Mr. Pennell?
I still have a problem with the, the budget part of it as far as relating to where it's at in the budget as far as trackability. I consider the elected positions no different at this table, the city attorney or the council. The only thing that I can see is there's not a set, set fee like, like ours at $2,400 a year. If we voted to change, as Ms. Ballance mentioned earlier, change the requirements under this, this chapter, and we approved a, say, $7,200 a year, which number one would establish a figure that is workable for potential retirement benefits as called for by the code. I don't, I don't see the, I'm not totally convinced that it's a personal services contract when it's in the code as an elected official with duties and rate of pay compensation spelled out just like it does for the council or city clerk or mayor or anybody else.
Then I'll authorize Mr. Weaver to contact municipal league and get a determination on it then. Mr. Weaver? We are so directed.
Aye.
Any further? This is the last chance. All right. Moving on to new business. Number one, discussion of BKD audit. Number one, discussion of BKD audit. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss BKD audit.
Second?
Second.
Quick question. Which one, which one are we discussing today, please?
BKD. This would be the, it would be this one. This would be the, last time we did water, I believe it was, wasn't it? We did water.
Last time we did state audit.
State audit, yeah. So, there's always two issues on, on BKD, the water and the wastewater.
Okay. So, today, tonight?
You can pick one, or you can do them both today. It's up to you.
Okay.
We actually have another one, a single audit report. I think that's what Ms. Ballance is talking about also. And then you have the water and wastewater.
And so, this is the one we will be discussing, the city? Or both?
Or both.
The yellow one. Yellow ones.
The other one is a state audit.
State audit's the one we talked about last time. So, it's either one of the two BKD audits that's on the agenda discussion.
I suppose we could start out with the wa, water and wastewater department.
If that's what you want to do. It should have an insert in there that looks like this. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I had some questions, but hopefully Mr. Clark will be able to answer for us.
Mr. Clark, would you give them a little background on your, your auditing services?
On my own experience?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When I first graduated from college, I went to work for a certified public accounting firm in Fort Smith, Arkansas. And back in those days, there was really not the experts in one field or another. We worked both in auditing and tax preparation. And so, I, for a number of years, worked for the firm that was the predecessor of BKD in Arkansas. And then BKD purchased that firm and I worked for them for several years. My audit experience covered everything from banks to savings and loans. We had savings and loans at that time, furniture manufacturing, other types of manufacturing One city that I did the audit on was Paris, Arkansas. And so, my experience went for a number of years, both as a tax person and as an auditor. Then went into private accounting, working for, first of all, wood manufacturer in the Fort Smith area. Stayed there a few years, worked for a truck line, did their accounting for them, worked for another CPA firm and then opened my own practice and moved back to Berryville in 1978, which was my wife and my home. So, I've had a lot of audit experience in the past. For the most recent years, I've been a tax person, doing tax planning, tax preparation, estate planning and those types of services for, and financial planning, for individuals, corporations, partnerships and other types of organizations. So, that's kind of the history of my accounting background, which encompasses in excess of forty years. I hold certificate number 1018 in the state of Arkansas, so I'm the 1,018th CPA ever to hold a license in this state.
With that, you can understand, Mr. Clark may have some expertise in this, this issue, so address any issues to him that you deem necessary.
If you'd let me start off for just a second, in this audit, I think the, the primary page here is the auditor's opinion.
Which one are you on, Mike?
Let me find it here. It's this one right here in the very front of the book. It's an independent accountant's report.
Which of the two? The single audit?
No, it's in the water and wastewater department.
Well, on the same page.
And this is, this is essentially what you're paying for when you, when you get the audit. First of all, they, in the first paragraphs, they define the scope of the audit and what standards they used in doing the audit and where those standards were developed and so forth. Then you come down to about the fourth paragraph and it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the department as of December the 31st, 2010, and the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year then ended in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." That's what you're looking for. That is called an unqualified opinion. There are no qualifications in, in that statement. So, they're saying that, in their opinion, the water and wastewater departments, the reports that were given to them, the information they were given to them and everything is Now, if you go on in and, and if you want to look at the financial statements, first off, you have the balance sheet, the assets and they're comparative here. They've included 2009 and 2010. And so, the assets, of course, includes the cash, the inventories, we don't have any marketable securities, the restricted cash and cash equivalents, restricted investments, the net capital assets and then the other assets, which is unamortized bond issuance costs and, as you said, those are prepaid costs that are amortized over the life of the bonds. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have a question for you, please.
Okay.
We see that in 2009, our total assets were 11,676,468. And at the end of 2010, the total assets were 10,935,240. Do you have, can you give us an overview of why our assets dropped?
Well, probably principally because of the recognition of depreciation, which you can't identify right here, but there is depreciation on the water and wastewater systems. It's not a cash, depreciation is not a cash expense. It's essentially, the system is wearing out over a period of years and so they take a percentage that every year and, and go ahead and write it off. And I'd say that's principally, but of course, if you look at various items down through there, you can see that, you know, our cash is not as great as it was, our accounts receivable is not as great as it was, inventories are not as significant as they were. And so, there has been some, some decline in, in that. Now, as I've done quite a bit of research here recently regarding the water and the wastewater systems, I found that, and this is jumping a little bit forward, if I may bear on the agenda, but I have found that the water and the wastewater rates...